Welcome, everyone. This is the September 19th meeting of the Village of Lansing Board of Trustees. It is 7:30 roll, I believe, and Mike has a recording on. My first order of business at our meetings is for a roll call. So when I call your name, just say present or here. Carolyn Greenwald.
Here.
Susan Ainsley.
Here.
Pat O'Rourke is out of the country. Jeff Dobbin is apparently absent, and Ronnie Hardaway is here. So three, we have a quorum of three physically in the room, so we meet the current requirements by the state to be able to vote on our considerations tonight. My next topic is, or actually, my next action is to open our public comment period. So I see that we have a couple of public in the meeting, and we might have some comments online. So if anyone would like to speak, please stand up and give us your name and tell us what you would like to say.
I have a short comment.
Okay.
My son just got his driver's license, so...
Stay off the roads.
And he's driving himself to piano right now, so I'm gonna leave my phone on, and if it rings, I'm gonna answer it, and I apologize, so.
It's okay. I completely understand.
Okay, now you guys can... I'm just checking right now.
...warn us before we get on the road.
He arrives.
...to the meeting.
He was going downtown, and you guys were...
Okay. We were saying... Thank you. Okay. I see no hands raised online and nothing inside the chambers, so I will move that we close the public comment period. I would need a second.
A second?
Susan seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. I have to also take notes for Jody, so... It will take us a little longer tonight, probably, for me to write. Try to write fast. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from August 11th, 15th, and 29th, and according to Jody's note, we were all in attendance at all three meetings, so we can, we can consider all three of those meetings at the same time. So I will move that we approve the draft minutes from August 11th, 15th, and 29th of 2022, but I will need a second.
I second.
Susan seconds.
That's not him. I don't know how to change his text.
Okay.
I don't know how to silence text. Let me try to do that.
Is there a...
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded? Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all of those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Our next topic then is to, is to continue our public hearing on the proposed updates to the Greenway plan, and I hope all of you have looked at those. Carolyn, at our staff meeting Thursday, raised an issue, and it is, I believe, if I had marked correctly, on page eight, under village walkways, dash sideways, and pathways.
It's just the incongruous nature between asking in improved, increased walkways in a development for those to be paved with something that's like a bike-friendly surface and then something paved with crushed stone paved.
Right.
Impervious. Have you thought about it, Susan, then?
Right. When we, I think that it probably should be changed, but I have, I have some ideas, and I'm not sure what the trustees would like. A private walkway could be crushed stone as long as the village is not maintaining it. However, it's not going to be ADA compliant. Private walkways would not then be able, like, you want in a wheelchair, or even a walker, or someone pushing a baby stroller could not use it, but a private development could still use a crushed stone if they so chose. We could ask for asphalt so that it would be ADA compliant, or we could just say that private pathways could be crushed stone or similar, and village-owned walkways or pathways must be surfaced with asphalt.
Do we want, that's what I'm, I'm just wondering, just more globally, not so much the language, is what we think would be most usable and attractive and useful. Because, I mean, the asphalt, is the asphalt the only way that a path's ADA compliant?
No, you could use concrete. You have to use a solid surface.
A solid surface.
You have to have a solid...
Because, I mean, there's something to be said for the aesthetics of a wooden path.
Right.
I mean, I know you said that Votapka is paved now, but when I lived there, it wasn't, and I walked that path every day for two years, and it was really nice. So I'm just wondering, because, and, and, you know, asphalt and concrete crack all the time, and it's not as attractive in that, like, natural way. So I don't, I don't know if I want to have language in there that says, like, must or shall, but then again, then we get the David Beers thing where he's looking for direction. I want to be able to direct people. I mean, I think one thing that we could do is, um, see, this is just a recommendation in, on page 11, that it either has a surface walkway or a sidewalk. So I think we could clarify maybe that if this planned development has a sidewalk, then it doesn't necessarily need the, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking about whether or not, I want to be inclusive, but I also think that there's an aesthetic issue that we lose with, and I also want to be able to, John, but I also think there's an aesthetic issue.
I have spoken with John about this in the past. We originally considered crushed stone for the Marion Hart Hill Park, but he discovered that there, there are issues with crushed stone. Yes, it looks more natural, it's easy to lay down, but as soon as it rains or after they've plowed snow off of it, it moves all of that off. And so his decision was to go with asphalt and anything in the village, and if we ever take over a pathway in the future that's private, that is not asphalt, that's going to have to become asphalt, and probably, I think John said, eight feet wide for their trucks, the utility vehicles with plows on them, to get down and plow those, those pathways. So it would have to become asphalt. So if we're going to recommend something, asphalt is probably the best way to go.
So then we have to change, then we have to change eight, then?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It's unfortunate, but yeah.
That, that, that surface pathways should be asphalt, should use an asphalt surface per, well, village, I don't know if we should say...
I would say it should be ADA compliant, use an asphalt surface, and be eight feet wide for plows. This is recommends, this is not must.
I'm just making notes here.
No?
I know.
Those are the three things, and they're just recommendations, and it's not a has-to-everytime kind of situation. But yeah, if we clarify what we recommend, at least, I think that's more user-friendly for people who are, consult the plan.
Yeah.
And then if a developer doesn't abide by those, the village doesn't necessarily have to take dedication or easement to them.
We absolutely would not.
Yeah.
So we could also put that in, too, like, should it develop, that would be, that would be more on, that would be more on page 11, then?
Probably.
Because that's what we're talking about with the construction of a new development.
Now, do you want me to make these changes and leave this public hearing open until we review those? The problem, well, consideration for this is, if we change the Greenway plan, we have to put another version online for our next meeting, for, to continue the public hearing. We might need to close this public hearing and open a new public hearing with a new version.
I do think we should change it. I mean, are we in a rush? It's kind of annoying to keep talking about it, but time-consuming.
There is no rush, there's no deadline on this.
So maybe we should change it.
We, we could change it. We could say that it's, these are friendly changes from our standpoint. We're in a public hearing, there are, apparently, there are no, although, did we, we did open the public hearing, okay, good, good. Just wanted to make sure we opened it.
Whenever Natalie's comfortable with it, I mean, whatever's quicker, I think.
Then if you add language that, without those criteria, the village will not accept a dedication or easement, then that would be a slightly larger change that may affect some developers and how they proceed forward with it.
But we don't have to put that in. It might be helpful to put it in.
But I think it...
It clarifies.
It clarifies the intent of the village and what developers can expect from the village in terms of taking dedication.
I, I have no problem with making this a, a better document. I wish we had caught this the many times it was reviewed, but this is one of those things that just slides through. So what we can do is, we can vote to close the public hearing and not accept this. After we close the public comment period, then we can open a new public comment period with the changes made and explain why, and point to the changes, and that would be fine with me, and I'm sure the Greenway Committee would be fine with it, too.
Okay. Carolyn?
I, I, this was a good catch, and thanks, thanks to...
David.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks to David for, for questioning it. That, that's a great thing. That's a different way of getting public comment on it, so that's great, and I appreciate you bringing it to us. So then, if, if it is okay, I will move that we close the public hearing on this document.
Yeah, I have one more...
Oh, you have one?
Change on six. It's, it would be very minor. At the very bottom, it said privately and description. Village of Lansing code defines land dedication. The actual definition is just dedication.
Is just dedication.
Yeah, the word land is not there.
Thank you. And I can make these changes pretty quickly and have it, have it ready for our next meeting. And we can open up another public hearing for the new document at that point, and it might not require us to extend it to two meetings, but it would be good to have another public comment on it, I think.
If we're making changes to the document, also on page six, I had written a note that under the village's sidewalk law, I wanted to clarify that there is a presumption. So it says, you know, the second sentence is, "The planning board at their discretion may waive the required sidewalks," but I didn't want to lead with that without saying also, but there's a presumption that the sidewalks will be...
Oh, I see what you're saying. That you may need to send to me.
Okay, I'll email you, then.
I'll just include all of these changes and mark them as changes on the document and send it out to all of the trustees.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna send myself a note to, to email you.
Any more changes on it? Okay, then I will make a motion that we close the public hearing on this version of the Greenway, the updated Greenway plan. I'll need a second.
I'm done.
Thank you, Susan. No further discussion, then? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So our next topic is to open the public hearing on proposed local law F. This is the amendment to the Village of Lansing Code and zoning law to replace a section on tree conservation. So I will move that we open that public hearing. I will need a second.
I second.
Okay, Susan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Just wanted to make a note that the county has returned to the GML 239 with no recommendations.
No recommendations.
The tree questions and implications document that was attached, who's the author of that? Jody?
Jody, I heard that.
Okay.
Yes.
Jody did. So is there one, anyone here who would like to speak about this particular local law F? Hi, Don. Stand up, tell us who you are.
Don Hartill, 7806 Gigahertz Road. I'm very concerned about this proposal.
Okay.
For a number of reasons. Sounds good, but it, it really takes away property owner's rights, and it does it in a way that I'm accepting. If we were to have this proposed law in place, Shannon Park, as it currently exists, wouldn't because it doesn't satisfy the criteria.
Okay.
I think Dart Road also would not satisfy, and so what are we doing? And I happen to own or manage about 25, 20 acres, a little more than 20 acres, of old growth forests. I'm very proud of it, and I think other people recognize that, but we do have to be sensitive to property owners' rights. The part that says, "If I were to develop a parcel that doesn't have trees on it, I've got to plant trees," we wouldn't want to do that. So I think it really needs major look, and I'll be happy to provide a written document with those concerns.
Thank you, Don. I would appreciate if you would send that at your convenience, not tonight or anything or tomorrow, but at your convenience, please send that forward. Any other comments? Anyone online?
I'm also speaking, Tom.
Oh, Tom, okay. Thank you.
The other comment is that you own this PDA in the Village of Lansing, it has twin lands. I love that, there are 14 acres set aside as common. That's a way to approach something, not a dictatorial thing, you have to do this. For a, Ken Oris, he doesn't have any trees, or very few.
Very few.
So if we were to develop, he has to plant a lot of trees. I think he had a little problem with that legally, and I think the village is setting itself up for a lot of legal challenges.
Thank you. That's a, that's a concerning perspective, too.
Eric, hand up also.
Eric?
Yes, my name's Eric Getzman. I own a few properties in the village. I just had a few comments regarding the tree law. One, like, maybe I just kind of hit my notes that I put on here under, you know, C, the minimum tree density is for major subdivisions or for special permits, and just something I raised to the, the board, you know, a, a special permit could be, you know, a half an acre. A major subdivision could be five or 10 or 15 acres or 50 acres. It's, it's hard to compare these two side by side, and I looked down the next one, it says, "There's 30 minimum trees per acre." Would that be pro-rata if you only had, like, a half an acre, like, Key Bank or some other properties in the village?
Yeah.
Okay, just, just, just raising some, some comments if that was the case, because I think a catch-all for a major subdivision and, and a special permit could be substantially different in size.
Yes.
I guess, okay, just, just for clarification, that's all.
Okay.
In some of the other comments, like, under 3D, again, my, my, I've primarily done commercial development in the village, you know, I've probably built 400,000 to 500,000 square feet in the village here, only a very small piece of residential, which has taken quite some time, but on some of these things, like the buffer, it says, under 3B, just for clarification again, it says, planting trees in the buffer does not count towards the tree density. And again, I would go back to, if you look at a commercial property, which I'm really looking at, bringing a restaurant in the village or something, most of my trees would probably be in the buffer zone, and the restaurants that, you know, we're working with even currently, they want visibility to your roads, so it might be hard to get 30 trees on a lot, go on, say. So to have a specific number, whether it's 30 or 20 or 40, I think it's just, it's hard based, it's a half an acre site or a 10 acre site. So just something to take in consideration when you look at the minimum number, that's all. And again, you know, I look at, like, I drove down Tripphammer today and looked like Key Bank. Key Bank is probably a half an acre site, it may have one or two trees on its own property. You know, look at McDonald's. McDonald's may have five or six trees on their property and some shrubs, you know, and I look at, you know, the gas station, only had any trees, or, or the car wash maybe had a handful of trees. It's, again, on the commercial property versus a residential, I think it's an entirely different ask, I think, or I'd recommend maybe the board at least consider that, because tenants coming here are looking in the city of Ithaca, they're looking up here, and they're also looking at, you know, visibility from the road. So I'm just raising some of these comments here, and then I go on to the parking lot trees, which I think is B in the parking lot trees, and it suggests that a parking lot tree be planted in or around a parking lot every 40 feet. Every 40 feet would be every fifth space of a parking lot, like Target, Bay's, or Regal. So what you're saying is you're gonna lose every fifth parking place you have in order to meet that criteria. So basically, I think the math is, you lose 20% of your parking lots where you've got to build 20% more impervious surface to satisfy this. And I think the real, the real issue I just want to raise with the board, again, I'm not doing the larger lots, but in maintaining for safety and clearing, it's extremely hard having trees in a parking lot when you're pushing the massive plows that they're doing there, you know, on there. So I understand it's a catch-all, but I'm just suggesting maybe in a special permit, you know, when it's on the commercial, a commercial might be a different use for what you're trying to get done versus a residential or something else. So I would just ask the board to consider, you know, something of that nature when they look at it. I mean, those are just the comments I had, you know, again, the commercial side of visibility, people are looking, you know, when you go, you go into some parking lots, even when you go down to Lowe's and the other ones, and you have too many trees, it's, it's hard to see, you're trying to look and see where the stores are, the parking spaces, and it's hard to see visibility sometimes. So I just asked that you look at in parking lots itself. I understand outside of it, but in a parking lot, it's hard. And that's all, the only comments I had, I just want to raise with the board, again, I've done a lot of the commercial side, you know, what tenants are looking for, and it's, I think, just some smaller lots, it'd be extremely hard to even get 30 trees on there. Bigger lots, I understand it can happen.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Just want to clarify a couple things. I don't disagree with you, Eric, and I don't disagree with you either, Mr. Hartill. I'm just, some of the facts on here that it's not essentially 30 trees per acre, it's actually 30 tree units per acre, so that makes it less trees. Like I said, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just stating some of the facts, and the 40 feet, a car needs to be within 40 feet of a tree, so that's actually, the trees would be 80 feet per, if you calculated it. So just, just throwing that out there, just some of the facts, that's all.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll also point out that, um, I think the commercial property builds are what encouraged the law in the first place. Specifically, Lisa was appalled by the Dairyland build and the trees that came down and the lack of trees that went up. So I, whether or not we pass this law in some capacity, I do think that consideration of commercial properties is, is almost more important than if we do, whether or not we do anything to residential. I think we need to make sure that there's something in place with regard to commercial.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. Are there any other comments? Don?
Now, while I'm concerned with some of the recommendations for trees, when we came here in the late 60s, I had a number of elm trees. Do you see any elm trees around? Don't think so. This past week, I had to take out six large ashes. Actually, it was time, so they died from the con. One of these was over two feet, the other two were, at least eight inches. If I drive through Shannon, Shannon Park, I see a bunch of spruces on the side of the road. They're in real trouble. I'm going to have to remove a couple of spruces because what's happening is that most of the leaves are going off. The new growth is still there. The only spruces that seem to survive are numerous spruces, and the list goes on. So the kinds of things that we have to be sensitive if we expect to keep Lansing like it is.
Thank you, Don. That's a good, that's a good point. With climate change, weather patterns are changing, the seasons are changing, and we have the invasion of various destructive species, beetles, et cetera, insects who come in. Also, I, that's, I think the, the types of trees we have to use can only be based on what we know at, at this point, but if we know something specifically is no longer appropriate for this area, we need to strike it off our list and say, no, something...
...have lots or a problem, too, because of other insects.
Right.
The problem we manage, the common, for example, we've lost several, pretty big sized.
I'm sorry to hear that. Sorry to hear about any tree being lost. I know that in the Marion Hart Hill Park, we actually had to remove a stand of ash trees because of the Emerald Ash Borer. So it's not that they were there, but it was just a matter of time, and they would be deteriorating, so...
Just two things with that. One is the die, the other is our...
Right. So what you say is, is absolutely true, that we have to continually monitor the species of trees that we approve and plant and try to maintain, and, and that's, that's going to be true from now on, I believe. There are times when we're going to have to replace the trees that do die off for whatever reason, so we have to look at the replacement being appropriate for the, the location and the climate in, in our area, so that's, that's a good point. Thank you.
Who's the author of this document?
The original author was Simon Moll.
In committee, or?
Uh, he, he, basically, it was part of our Climate Smart Communities program, and crossed over into the planning board once it was starting to become a potential law. So the planning board also had some input into it, and, along with Mike, and so, Simon did the original authorship, and it's had some revisions made by the planning board, so what we're, what we are now considering is like a hybrid between those.
I'm just kind of wondering about the underlying basis for decisions, like, is there a document from Climate Smart that makes recommendations that Simon then followed?
No.
Where the numbers come from is...
No, it's not a CSC document. We were looking at natural resources inventory, and part of that is to take a look at our trees, and at about that time, there were some properties that were going to be developed where they, the properties were basically clear cut.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
Like, it was time to try to protect trees, rather than someone coming in and asking for forgiveness, we at least wanted them to ask permission, at least let us know what they're going to do, see if there were trees that we could save, and so Simon took that on as a research and writing project, and made most of the proposal, proposal that is here with some changes by the planning board. Simon could probably give us all of his sources if, if need be, but I know that he checked with New York State, federal, trying to get some models of how to protect trees.
But if you're taking your parts, if it's clear, it was for my sake, it's probably mine, so by far.
Yeah. It's okay. We'd like to know next time before we wake up, and the trees are all gone. So there are enough comments tonight, and enough concerns, that I feel that it's probably appropriate to leave this public hearing open at least one more meeting to see if we get more comments, and, and... And, and that's fine, the more the better, before we make our, our decision as, as trustees. So if everyone's okay with that, uh, we will move on without closing this public comment period. Concerns with that?
No, I just have one other concern in general, something that, I, I mean, I do think this document needs a lot to be addressed, but Don brought up the, the old growth forest. And I wonder if that should be kind of thought about in its own capacity in some way, because that's quite the, quite the natural resource.
Uh, yeah, it would be part of a natural resource, but you have to be careful with the definition of old growth. There is, there is the anecdotal definition of the old growth, where it's been around for thirty or forty years, there's a longer term, the, the federal or national old growth is that they have to have been here for about two or three hundred years. So we have to kind of put a definition around what we consider to be old, old growth. But, uh, the, uh, the Greenway Stand of trees, definitely, we could, we could look at on how to protect those. So, uh, those are important. But anyway, uh, I guess before we close, I, I've had some, uh, anonymous concerns with this also that were passed on to me, they're not in attendance tonight, uh, but there, there was concern about how this would be, uh, enforced, for instance. How, how would this be enforced? Uh, and I, I'm not sure exactly. Um, Mike's, uh, Mike's workload right now is fairly full. And with the, uh, the new state code coming up, uh, he's going to be doing even more along with, uh, Brian Quadrosi. So there is some concern about the, uh, potential enforcement or lack of enforcement and it's, you know, how would we address that? And if we're going to enforce, how would it be enforced, uh, consistently throughout the village? If we didn't have time to enforce it, one, if you don't enforce one, that's a precedent for everyone following that too. So that's something that we need to, to be thinking about. The other is that people thought that, uh, the, these types of decisions were actually decisions that were made at the planning board level when they consider a special permit with their landscaping plans, because they review those landscaping plans and they have the ability to say what trees, what trees should be there, where they should be, how many, et cetera. So we sort of have something now. What that doesn't capture is what do you do with someone who owns the property, has not put forward a plan, but they decide to clear cut that property? How can we protect those trees? Should we protect them and how to protect them? So those are just comments that I'm passing along from, from what I have heard. So, uh, I, I meant to do that earlier, I apologize.
On the enforcement issue, I think that, that we definitely need to think about it, but I don't think that we shy away from it because of a workload issue or a lack of, you know, police, because like when you get to short-term rentals, you're gonna have the exact same question. So then you're just never gonna pass a new law because it's always gonna have a workload app. So then you're just, then you're just, you're just starting changing the code. So, but I, 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 I do think there's some, some concerns and maybe there's some things that we have to think about here.
Agreed.
But, and, and enforcement is one of them, but also I wouldn't want to not be able to do it because we felt like that. I'm thinking maybe there needs to be a penalties section. I don't know how that would change the law dramatically, but yeah, and it seems like that should be something that.
Yeah, we, we have a.
Pines and penalties for removal without permit of, you know, some sort of diameter of trees. And I agree that maybe some people would get away with it, but like, some people of the properties that we've all, all noticed been like, whoa, what just happened there? They wouldn't get away with it and may, maybe then, then it'd be a deterrent law. And then the next time somebody would be like, oh yeah, don't do that, you're gonna get this fee, what have you. That'd be one way to go.
What you're saying is, is absolutely true, Carol. And it's, it's, we should not, not pass it because it can't be enforced, but we need to think about the staff who have to enforce it. How can we help them enforce it properly? Or, uh, how can we deal with, uh, how can we conserve trees and deal with enforcement at the same time? So all of this is snowballing into, uh, a fairly large set of concerns. And I think we should leave this open and discuss it more.
Yeah, but we should do something though, I do think that we should do something, maybe it's just on the planning board, special permit level, maybe it's more global, maybe there's penalties. But I do think we should look towards protecting trees because it's happened to us more than once.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as the penalty code goes, if it's in the code, it basically gets handled with any other violation of the code. So it, there, there already is a means to, um, to penalize people for not following the code, so I, I, I don't think that's, I think it was kind of built in as you, you know, as you agreed that this is going, this new code is going in the village code, it already gets blanketed underneath the violation process.
But did the violation process have amounts?
Yes, it's the same as it would be for violating the uniform code.
You wouldn't want there to be specific tree-related amounts and penalties?
You're gonna be viol, you, you're going to be, what it is, you're going to be, uh, you'll be, uh, sent a notice of violation. And that, for example, you cut down fifty percent of the trees and you did not, uh, put into the tree bank. Then that would be written up as a notice of violation and you had thirty days to, uh, you know, tend to that violation, and if you don't at that point, then all of your fees start to pile up.
And what would that, what would those be?
I think two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
And they, and then they're just giving money to the tree bank?
I'm sorry.
Well, that would mean of, means of compliance within the thirty days.
Yes. Yeah.
If the trees, I'm thinking of a scenario where you have the beautiful giant tree that everybody drives by, all of a sudden we all notice it's gone. And the property's clear cut, where it's, so all the trees are gone, including something. Then how is there any kind of thirty day compliance? I mean, the trees are gone.
Pay the amount into the tree bank or replant trees within those thirty days.
Yep.
And how much would that amount be that you'd pay into the tree bank?
On the DP's W's estimate of the cost of planting and maintaining a tree for, I believe we decided a year.
Yeah.
So John would have to determine cost per tree.
Okay.
Tree, the planning and maintenance.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, we will leave this one open for our next meeting and we will probably have some more discussion at that meeting, uh, on this topic, so all good comments tonight, I appreciate everyone's input. Thank you, thank you, Don, I appreciate it. And, uh, I will, uh, have Jody incorporate those into the minutes once we receive them, even if it's after the fact, we'll be sure that we'll have a note that they're to come and then once they're there, they'll become part of the tonight's minutes. Thanks again. Okay. Our next topic for tonight is the, uh, open, to open the public hearing for a proposed local law G, the amendment to the Village of Lansing Code for, regarding special permit. So, basically, uh, I will open this public comment. I will move that we open this public comment period. And, um, I would need a second.
I second.
Thank you, Susan.
Welcome.
I'm making a note here about the public hearing. Okay, are there, uh, any comments regarding, uh, local law G, uh, about the amendment to a special permit within village code?
Just quickly, again, it was sent to, it was B M L two thirty-nine and no records from the county. And this amendment is pretty much, uh, words were changed due to a, uh, misinterpret, not misinterpretation, a, uh, what, what would you call it?
Ambiguity.
Of, of a, uh, a, a special, a recent special permit.
Okay. Can you tell us what those words were?
Okay.
Just for the record.
Um, basically, as you'll see in, uh, in section B, uh, from D nine, uh, one forty-five fifty-nine, D nine, is changed and it was held in there, uh, it was basically changed that, uh, if there is a condition on a special permit that is not met, the village code officer shall withhold or suspend any existing building permit, um, that is attached to that special permit. Before, we did not have the, uh, suspend in there. And, uh, so there's a question on whether you could actually, uh, put a stop work order on a job.
Okay, okay.
And Natalie, you did, uh, the section B.
Yes, I added the ability of the planning board to revoke a special permit if after a hearing they determined there's been substantial failure to comply with the terms and conditions of the permit.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you both for the work on that. Are there any comments? I see Eric.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just maybe a little clarification on here, just reading through this. I see it's conditioned to special permit, the board is authorized to decide upon a special permit application. She'll be authority to impose such reasonable conditions and restrictions as are directly related to and, uh, incident on the proposed special permit. And it, if I could suggest to add to that, you know, as stated in the local laws, the Village of Lansing Uniform Codes. Just to clarify what it is that, that, uh, the conditions relate to.
That is exact verbiage from the New York State Code, so the addition would be inappropriate in my opinion.
So reasonable conditions, restrictions are directly to, so can the planning board ask for anything then? Or is it really what's in their code? Aren't the code the laws of the Village of Lansing that the planning board enforces?
The planning board can impose reasonable conditions related to the special permit. We've had, we had this discussion at the planning board meeting. I understand we disagree. However, it is not limited to the specific powers that are enumerated within the code, it can be anything that's incidental to the special permit.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to see if there's clarification, because usually in a special permit, you have the general ten conditions, ten general conditions of special permit in which the conditions are added to, to make sure that something doesn't apply, and so usually additional conditions are added to. It's just, again, it's my understanding from talking to some other people that the board has the, the authority, the right to impose those as long as it's, you know, within their code, if they're allowed to do so, that's all.
So this, basically, this, this particular, the, the conditions are, uh, open-ended, they're not, they're not specific. So this allows some flexibility on the planning board's part about what they would require as long as those conditions are reasonable, is that correct? Okay.
Conditions do not need to be backed up by a certain snippet in the village code.
Okay. So the reasonable conditions are designated within the special permit, correct?
Yes, a special permit is a privilege to have and it's not a right as per code.
Okay, I understand, right. Are there any other comments? If not, uh, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on proposed local law G, amendment to the Village of Lansing Code, special permit. I would need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Susan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pass this. Okay.
Public hearing, do you need to?
We then need to, we need to, uh, pass the, uh, resolution regarding, yes, that's what I was looking for. That's okay, that's what I was looking for here. So we now need to, I will move the resolution number that Jody will provide later to adopt proposed local law G twenty twenty-two, amendment to Village of Lansing Code, special permit as local law eight.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jody left me a lot of specific notes, I want to do it right, or you know Jody. Okay, uh, so that's taken care of then. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor passing this resolution, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Now then, the next one is, I, the Village, uh, at the September twelfth meeting, planning board voted unanimously to, uh, recommend Lorraine Capagrossi to be appointed a full member of the planning board. And so I would like to, uh, move a resolution number that, uh, Johnny will provide later to, to appoint Lorraine Capagrossi as a full member of the Village of Lansing Planning Board.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there any discussion? Do you, you, you know, she said that she knew you.
I do, um, I can highly recommend her.
Good, good, she seemed to be on top of things, she's been, been attending meetings, getting caught up, understanding what's going on, so.
Reading all the minutes?
Reading the minutes.
Reading the minutes, so.
Attending video.
She's doing all the work, so let's give her some credit, okay?
Well, that's great. And she proof reads.
She proof reads too?
For Fonzie's.
She enjoys proofreading, which is a real plus.
We only have one version of the proofreading planner here.
All, all good qualities and characteristics to have on, on a planning board, so that's great, I'm glad to hear that, just reinforces my impression of her. I met her for the first time, I didn't know who she was, I just went up and introduced myself and I thought she was there for public, public comment, but it turns out, no, she had been coming for a while, I just never saw her on camera because I was attending remotely. So, that's great, so, um, I, I've moved the resolution, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Lorraine is officially a planning board member, that's great. Okay, this is night tonight. This, the next one is to, this was a recommendation made by John Courtney to consider updating a, a tree planting program. At the August, it says, uh, she wrote nineteenth is actually, no, it was twenty-ninth, okay, sorry. The August twenty-ninth meeting, we, John Courtney suggested we update the tree planting program to increase the amount the village will pay up to a flat one hundred dollars per tree. Currently, the, the, the program says that the resident will receive seventy-five percent of the cost up to two trees and labor for planting by a qualified nursery or contractor up to seventy-five, so we're increasing that to a flat fee of one hundred dollars. No contractor or, um, nursery costs included, so. And he felt that that was kind of confusing to residents and might have put them off from using the program and we're trying to do things to improve our tree situation, get more trees out there. So Jody had sent us an explanation of how the tree program currently works. The brochure, procedure letter given to the residents that want to participate, so had you all looked at those? And I, I've seen it before and it wasn't terribly confusing to me, but I'm, I guess some, for some people it would be. So, uh, I will move the resolution to the table to increase the amount the village pays for the tree planting program from seventy-five percent of the cost up to two trees and labor for planting by a qualified nursery or contractor up to seventy-five dollars per tree to up to one hundred dollars of the cost of up to two trees and labor for planting by a qualified nursery or contractor, so it does include that, okay. That was my misunderstanding, so it does include the qualified nursery or contractor, I will move that, do I have a second?
I second. Sorry, I, now that you're saying it out loud, I'm now realizing that his change has one, raises one comment for me, which is up to two trees, is that like for life or at a time or?
Uh, I think it's an annual. I think it's an annual.
Annual.
Amount.
Okay, this is, we see that then.
So the, the tree program would still stay.
It's an annual.
Yeah, it's just we're changing the amount.
That's fine.
Nothing else changes within the program. So it's been moved and seconded, we started the discussion, is there any further discussion on this? See none online, none in chambers. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of this change or this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we'll try to have an article on this in our fall newsletter to let people know that that's changed. Okay, thank you, making sure I'm following all of our, yes, okay, now we're up to the sign requests from Tops Market. So Tops is asking for two additional signs on the main building. And according to that, the planned sign area in the main building is limited to one sign and 150 square feet. The existing sign on Tops Main Building has 136.5 square feet. With the requested addition, the main building would then have three signs totaling 2,005.55 square feet. Any change in the planned sign area needs our approval. So we also found out tonight that there's a Citizens Bank sign that was installed Friday, so that's going to increase the area. Do you have that increased, Mike?
Yeah, a little background, Tops is going, they're going a few changes inside, Citizens Bank is now, it once was a bank and they're not, Citizens Bank is back in and they're pretty close to opening up, just got a few details added to. As the mayor has said, at this point, the main building is allowed one sign, on the handout I gave you, they're allowed one sign and 150 square feet, they're under that at this moment. They're looking to add a fresh food sign, which is 38 square feet, and a pharmacy sign, well, 30 square feet. And also that Citizens Bank would like another sign which totals 25 square feet. So if you were to approve this, and you'll see on the second page there, I made some changes, the new approval would be total number of four signs and a maximum square footage of 231 feet instead of the three signs, the 206 feet. Now, I would also put a footnote with that so that something doesn't, so that there's not one big huge sign there, I would put a footnote that no single sign may be over 150 square feet. That would keep the size relatively small on the building. There is a photo of how it would look, in my opinion, nothing grossly out of place, but that would be your decision.
If this were three separate buildings?
I'm sorry?
If this were three separate buildings, because aesthetically it kind of has like that demarcation, like say it was the mall, like the mall.
It's all on one, this is all on one facade, this would be just the main.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, if this were, like, say this was the mall and it, you know, like, and it were three separate buildings, would the signage that proposed fall, be within the allowed amount?
The signage for, I did a comparison.
Okay, yeah.
Signage for the Tops parcel, the main building, is less than square footage per facade frontage than it is for the.
Right, that's what it sort of looks like.
It's less, okay.
I agree with you that it doesn't seem like obnoxious in any way and it does seem like if this were three separate buildings, because it does have the, the division of the Tops central being higher. It, it looks, you know, less sign heavy than like, for example, the Hummel. On the other hand, I just, in general, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but in general, I always find that the corporations always come forward with additional sign requests and I feel bad about granting them to the extent that maybe somebody who was a smaller business owner wouldn't maybe then come and always ask for the variances that we wind up giving to, you know, Tops and Maguire type companies. Sort of want to point out to that, that maybe there's some kind of inherent problem with the system, but with signage in particular, seems to always come up. But I don't have any problem with this proposal specifically.
Well, the, one thing that we might could do to alleviate this concern, in this case, Carolyn, is that we could consider this a major change and require a public hearing on these signs.
If you think it's necessary, I don't know.
It's just an option, that's, that's, that's our prerogative tonight.
Okay.
So I, I'll read the resolution and I'll need a second, hang on. So the board trustees has determined that the Tops sign request is a minor change or a major change. It authorizes the code zoning officer to revise existing planned sign area originally approved, 11/1915, for Tops main signs area from 150 square feet to 231 square feet for four signs, bringing the total planned sign area for Tops and out parcels to, what did you have the total, Mike? Adding 15, 93, 593, no, 25, 603.
603.
Square feet for a total of 30 signs.
Be a total of 31 signs.
31 signs, thank you, that's good. So do we consider all of these a minor change or do we want them to take their major?
Historically, Mike, just because of precedent reasons, have there been major or minor requests with regard to signage increases of similar capacity that we've declared a major change?
I, we haven't had anything that would affect planned sign areas as far as increase in the actual planned sign area. We've had some interpretations on whether they actually meet the planned sign area criteria, which we had at Teque, the mall. We've also had, we've had a couple of variances in areas that weren't in the planned sign area, obviously you pointed out Nissan or whatnot, but this is the first time since I've been here that we've had to actually change a planned sign area. Because the ones that were, it, like, we had, for example, Planet Fitness, they were, they have a planned sign area, but they also have a criteria that you have so many square footage as per the facade you have in the front. And they met that, they ended up meeting that. So this is kind of a unique situation for me, not for the, obviously for the trustees. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so Tops just wants to be.
Excuse me, would you give us your name? Thank you.
My name is Clayton Curry, I'm the store manager, I'm here to represent Tops. So we just want to make sure that anyone that might not be familiar with the area, locating or maybe not familiar with Tops, that they actually know what the store is. So I travel from skinny Alice every day, I got transferred about a year and a half ago, and if you pull up in front of Tops and just seeing just Tops, I mean, I wouldn't know what it was if I wasn't from the area or worked for the company, you know? So we just want to make sure that the people in the area know what we have in store, the departments that we have, that we offer, pharmacy, fresh foods, and the Citizens Bank, which is kind of just a, we just had that added because the bank's going to be opening soon. But yeah, we just want to be able to let the people of the community know what we have in store.
Natalie, do you see any precedent problems with calling it a major or a minor change?
The lights aren't going to be illuminated, so.
I noticed that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's less than a 20% increase, if my math is correct.
It is minor.
And I think generally, that's kind of a rule of thumb as to watch a look at major or minor.
Yeah.
It's well under 20%.
Doesn't look like a huge, it's not, it's not an imposing signage amount.
I guess my only concern, and it's just from an aesthetic standpoint, is the Citizens Bank and the pharmacy signs are very close together.
We have different options, one was to relocate the pharmacy and fresh foods to one side, the larger side of the building, the front of the building's area, and then we could move the citizens sign from where it is now up to where the pharmacy is being requested on, I think it's option two.
This was just.
Oh, okay.
It's option two, there's.
Okay.
So that way it wasn't.
My concern with this is citizens sign is already been installed.
Right, we can have it relocated.
Yeah, it's just.
Can I see it, Roddy, can you hold it up?
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
Just turn it around.
You just pass this.
The citizens sign now just.
Yeah, it's, it's right in here.
Oh.
The citizens signs go.
You, you don't like this one, okay.
It's not, there's no circle, it's just, it's just written there, but that's where it is.
Okay, I think it looks fine.
It was kind of a white blue color.
It's like a green.
Green, yeah, yeah, okay, I just look at.
I'm not positive, but I don't think that's illuminated either.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to drive it.
Okay, it looked like it was going to be.
It was installed Friday, so.
Okay, I didn't see.
Yeah, but I actually brought it up this morning because I don't think they were prepared to have all three signs added.
I will let, I'll let you decide. I, I think it's a minor change, I, I think either, either of these works if it's more appropriate to move the pharmacy over to the fresh foods, I'm open, fresh foods, I'm open to that too, also as a minor. But I, I think even having the citizens and pharmacy together like this, they're, they're totally different styles, it wouldn't run together or anything, but that was just a concern, so I, I will, leave that to you too, what, what do you say?
I say minor.
Minor?
Yeah, I say minor too.
So we're not saying it's a major change, we don't need to set a public hearing, are we okay with path, passing this resolution to allow Mike to revise existing planned sign area for this as, as option one or option two, do you have a preference?
I don't, but the citizens sign is, as you say, installed.
Right.
So it's perhaps a hardship, you know, if we.
Yeah, I, I would hate to move it.
And the fonts are different, so I have no preference for the other.
Yeah, I, I don't have a preference either, so I think we could.
Let the option stand.
What do you think, Carolyn?
I think that if you come back ever, I would like to know if this works.
I'm just, I'm thinking like with all the students, you know, I mean.
I'm just very, I wish we could, we had, I don't know if Tops does like beta testing on with, without, with or without this language, have they, have they had success?
It's actually my suggestion.
Oh, really?
Because, I mean, it's just Tops and if you don't know what Tops is, I mean, how do you even know it's a supermarket?
No, I really like it, it's a suggestion, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be the beta test right here, and then you're gonna tell us if it helps business.
I'll talk to our sales engineers.
Yeah, and then we'll go like this.
If they want to see this.
I hope they do.
Okay, all right. Okay, so. I moved this, did someone second it?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. And so I will read this again just for clarification, resolution number, et cetera. The board and trustees has determined the Tops sign request is a minor change and authorizes the code zoning officer to revise existing planned sign area originally approved on 11/19/2015 for Tops main signs from 150 square feet to 231 square feet for four signs, bringing the total planned sign area for Tops and out parcels to 603 square feet for 31 signs. So if there's no further.
The added footnote that we wanted to make sure that it wasn't.
Okay. With a footnote that, see if we can put this in here, no single sign, I don't know if this will work, maybe over 150 square feet. Does that work, Natalie? Do we need to really put that in there? The no single sign may be over 150.
I was sort of even given Mike's, I think, valid concern that if any of the four signs came down, we could have won 230 foot square foot sign.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good input, that's why I asked you. Okay, so if, if there's no other discussion about this then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so now we have a. We have an interesting topic for tonight, we've got to set a, and I'm glad you're here, Don, we have to set a date for our conference room dedication for Don's plaque.
When you'll be here.
So Jody was recommending to us that in our evening meeting on Thursday, October 17th, 2022, are you available for that, Don?
I think so.
Okay, well, if you're not, let us know, we'll do a, a date that's works with you, you need to be here for this. Okay. So the plaque's complete, Jody showed it to me, it looks, it looks very nice, so we're dedicating the conference room to Don Hartzell, he'll forever be here, even if he's not. So October, the evening of October 17th, 2022, it will be on the agenda and that way, if we know now, we can also put it in our newsletter and get the word out and see if we can get some good updates. And obviously we'll be recording it for posterity's sake and send Don a video later. So there's also a smaller plaque that's going to list all of the mayors up to me in the village, it's, it's not, Don's is a pretty good size, the other one's just kind of a smallish one. So does this date sound good to everyone? Susan, Carolyn, will you be here?
Yep.
Okay, and we're going to withhold this dedication.
Suggested date. I don't think we need to vote on that.
All right, so next is Lansing Meadows escrow release. Mike, this was just added, Mike had some information, so Mike's going to give us some information about releasing some of the Lansing Meadows sidewalk escrow monies, so let's listen to what he has to say and we will vote on this.
Eric Getzman has requested another draw from his sidewalk escrow. On August 1st, the board of trustees released what was 65% of the existing escrow, the existing escrow was 150,000 and some change, and the, the 65% ended up being right around 99,000 that was, that was given back to him. This was, the remaining balance would been, would be $53,500 and 65 cents. What I am, what I'm requesting is we keep $20,000 in the escrow, there are, there are still a few minor repairs that need to be done, especially to the driveway areas, I've spoken with John Courtney, he is in agreeance with this. So like I said, my suggestion would be to, you'd be basically releasing another 22% of it, which would be $33,500 and 65 cents, that's what you'd be releasing to him, and that would leave 20,000, even 20,000 left in the escrow for completion.
Okay, and you said that John thought that $20,000 would be adequate for what's running.
Yep.
Did we, do we do this by resolution or just vote to approve? I don't recall.
You had a resolution to it because.
Okay.
It was a resolution 6875 was the last resolution, so Jody will have to sign one to it.
Okay, so we, the wording would be, so I will make a motion, then we will discuss, that we release an additional 22% of the Lansing Meadows sidewalk escrow account in the amount of $33,500 and 65 cents to Arrowhead Ventures. Go ahead.
Second.
Is there any discussion before we? Is there any discussion before we...
No, as long as you all agree that the monies should be released.
Great.
I'd like to follow the advice of Mike and John as they've evaluated the situation.
I agree, I agree. So, but that's good. I completely agree. Natalie, what do you say?
I agree with whatever Mike and John suggest.
I agree, too. All right, so we all agree. So with no further discussion, all those in favor of passing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? It's done.
Thank you for putting on this last minute.
You're welcome, Mike. Is anyone else? I don't know. Okay. Mayor's comments. I only have one comment. Our Safe Streets For All grant proposal was submitted and accepted by federal government. So, Don, this was, I don't know if you're aware, John, are you aware? Okay. So basically, what this will do, if we get this grant, is it will allow us as the combined communities to put together an action plan, to build an action plan from input from all of us with subsections or appendices or the like related to each municipality or organization or entity that will be part of this. And somewhere down the road, if we get this grant, then we will be working on an action plan. And once the action plan is approved by everyone through, I guess, memorandums of understanding, we would probably pass a resolution of some sort. Then we have, therefore, we have an action plan that would allow for us to combine with other municipalities in this action plan or on our own, if we wanted to, apply for federal grants related to Safe Streets For All. So I don't know where this would go. We paid a fairly small amount to be part of it, but for down the road, if we want to apply or join in on a future project that's part of the action plan, then we could do so because we joined this grant proposal and joined the action, actually participated in the writing of the action plan. So that was, the first step has been taken. It's actually a second step, but the first step from the federal side has been taken and we'll just now have to hear, await and hear if we are, if we receive the grant. And what I heard today, that they're expecting to hear word back around the end of this year. So, and that's the only thing I have for tonight. So around the table, Carolyn?
Just, I don't know, I CC you on the email that I sent to Rod Howe, just asking him to keep us informed on any client, what is it called again? Community choice aggregation programs that the town and city get together on. And hopefully, we'll just keep informed is what they're doing and join in if there's times in the future. And just in general, I'm just still interested in, did you at the conference sit in on any community choice aggregation lectures? Because that's where I first heard about it.
No. That wasn't on my list, my Jody list.
Okay. That's definitely something we can look at. The methodology behind that now is starting to shift, so there's not a tremendous burden placed upon municipal staff, in our case, the village staff, being very small. We just, we couldn't accept the... So there are municipal companies, municipalities through that, but I still want to see that model work a little bit. So when Rod and the town go through this, we will understand what their experiences and see if it's something right for us down the road. So, thank you, Carol. I saw that. I think I was on his email list, but I think it's just rumbles through with...
Yeah, you're on a lot of email lists, you're on a lot of committees.
And just... Close my eyes and count to my... So anyway, thank you. And I will pay...
Well, I asked him to put me on the list, so then when they come in, you can ignore them.
No, I won't ignore them.
I didn't tell him to take you off the list. I said, "加" me.
So keep me on my toes, I'll keep you on yours.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Carolyn? I mean, Carolyn.
Other Carolyn.
Tell us.
It was amazing, and I thank the village for sending me.
Yeah.
And it also, bottom line is the Village of Lansing has an amazing organization.
I agree.
What classes did you go to?
It was on my list. Don't ask me exactly. However...
Aspect.
But primarily, the auditing, the records-keeping, so anything that had to do with that.
Yeah.
Aspect. So I attended with a lot of CPAs who are either new hires or have been coming for a while, but there was, they didn't, I didn't hear the words exactly, but it appeared to be a record attendance, a lot of new people. But everybody paid attention, they listened, they asked good questions.
Did you bring back any ideas that you want to implement?
Not yet. It's still sinking in.
It's a fire hose of information.
Yeah.
I came back and I shot you guys like a two-page memo, including community choice aggregation.
That wasn't my, one of my assignments.
I didn't have an assignment, I just...
But I am looking forward to continuing to go and pay attention and have a chance to go to the, not extra sessions, but not necessarily the sessions that had to do primarily with the audit coming.
Right.
And the whole new, new way of reporting to the state.
Okay.
But I also came away with knowing that apparently you can call the state with your questions. I mean, staff can.
Yeah, no, no.
And they are responsive, and they want to help.
Right.
So we don't need to get mired down in, oh my gosh, what does this really mean?
Their response is usually fairly quick.
Well, that, I mean, that, if there's any takeaway from the question and answer sessions after the presentation, I heard nothing but good reports with regard to the state supporting local. And it didn't matter if it was a little, little municipality off in the corner of the north country or the big guys down state.
What office specifically you're speaking of?
I'm sorry?
What office are you speaking of?
What office?
Yeah.
Oh, the state.
What do you mean? Like, the state's a big state.
NICOM. Well, the NICOM staff.
Oh, that's different. That's not the state. Okay.
But they have the answers and support and understand what the state is requiring.
It's the control.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's the...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yeah, it's kind of a hybrid, but the control is often, I think it's the control's office. They have a lot of really good information on the brochures. Well, the thing to do in the future meetings or topics is if something we say triggers a thought about...
Oh, absolutely.
Something about this, and there might be something new or a question, bring it up, because even if you don't know the full details, well, oh, we need to ask that question and make some new information from the NICOM or the OSC, State Control Office. So, yeah. Okay. And your fully written report will be into this.
I'll go through my notes. I'll bring you my printouts that they were happy.
Okay.
And photocopy, so you each have a copy. Each presentation at your leisure, you may go through.
Yeah. I'm waiting.
Okay.
I check my email every day.
Hey, I'm sure that'll be a delete.
No, no, I'm glad you enjoyed it. I highly recommend it to anyone who's new. It's a great thing, and you meet great people.
Absolutely.
And you see public servants at their best at all levels, at the presenters and at the attendees. So it's a great thing. It really is a lot of fun. So I'm glad, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Mike, while you're here, are you ready to go?
I rest my case.
Okay. Then I will move that we adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Susan? Okay. And no discussion?